Can reconvene the Wednesday, August 7th, 2019, regular board meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6:15 to discuss a personnel matter. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Will O'Beare.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Wendy Sampson.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbach.
Meredith Moriarty.
Christine Beck.
Chris Meyer.
And Judy Kehoe.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. First, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the July 9th, 2019 organizational board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Second, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the July 11th, 2019, special board meeting. So, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. And next up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I have several announcements. It's been awhile since we met. The first is just a quick update on construction. As you can see, we have a lot of construction going on, not just here at the high school, but in all of our buildings. Everything is pretty much going as scheduled. However, we've had a few minor issues, and the most significant one is related to the high school pool. There are some perimeter drain issues that we've talked about in the Facilities Committee meeting. So this really has bumped the completion date from what we anticipated to be August 15th till probably around September 15th. So we are able to use the town pool. Mr. Keyes has confirmed that for swimming and diving tryouts in practices. So that will be a budget impact. It's not something we planned for, but is just related to what we found in the pool. Also related to, so the charge to town is about $135 for the week to practice about four to, for four to five weeks. So we would have to transport students to the town park, and I have some costs associated with that. Related to that, though, we've also been unable to find a dive coach for our fall program. We had not been able to until recently. Mr. Keyes, and I know he's here tonight if you have questions, was able to get in touch with a gentleman who's the dive coach at Union College, who's well-regarded by, he's worked in other districts, and he's willing to be our girls' dive coach. However, because of his schedule, we would actually need to bring our girls to Union College for practices. So that would be a cost for us to do that. Our head coach has spoken to the divers' parents, and it sounds like they would most likely only require a bus one way, and they would carpool. So just to give you an idea of costs, to bring students to Union, which would be around $5.15, and pickup is about $1.75 for a trip. If we're just dropping off, it's about $125. And then the transportation to the town park is about $60. So it's not a huge cost, although going to Union is somewhat of an inconvenience. It's, it's better than no dive coach. So.
Would it be problematic to give them transportation back from practice if we were to bring them out to Union? It just, I would hate to think that we have to rely on parents to bring them back.
So we could do that. It's not a huge cost to us, so I would have, Mr. Keyes would be in touch and the coach with the parents about that issue, and then we would do whatever makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that, okay? Okay. Then I wanted to turn it over to Judy Kehoe quickly for an update on the capital outlay project.
Can I ask a quick construction question first? I said a couple people asked, they saw the Elsmere parking lot, and they were just questions about how that was moving along.
So it's a little delayed. There were a few things we just talked about during the Facilities Committee that came up that were unanticipated, but we're still projecting it will be ready to go by the start of school. The one area, we're going to do the back prior to school, that may not happen because we're not sure timeframe will get that done, so.
It doesn't look like the playground's going to be done this year at Elsmere, which is a little bit disappointing because of the unexpected sewer drainage things they found.
Yeah, these people came and asked because they saw the piles of dirt and stone there, and are like, "Are we gonna have a parking lot in September?" So, that's all. Thank you.
Yes.
Short answer, yes.
And Judy, just to be clear, the back will be done the following summer?
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Judy? The capital outlay. We have done capital outlay projects for the last several years where we have the Board and the community authorize us to do a project. We know that we're not going to get aid for any more than $100,000. In submitting the final cost report this week for the 1819 project, we spoke with state ed, and they advised that the debatable amount is not limited to the $100,000. The entire project cost is limited to the $100,000. So because we exceeded that amount for the transportation compressor project this past year, it's still debatable, but it's not debatable in a lump sum in the subsequent year. So we still will be getting the money, but the money will be coming in on a slower timeline. Financially, it's not a huge amount. The shortfall in the aid is about .2% of our state aid. What it does do is give us pause to think about these capital outlay projects as we develop the budget for next year. There has been talk over the last few years that we, that legislature might authorize a higher amount for those capital outlays. $100,000 doesn't really get you that far when you have these types of projects. So we'll want to look at that and see whether we can right-size work going forward, or whether we just want to roll the work up into the next bond. But I did want to flag that for you because that'll be a slight variance on the building aid in the coming year. Also, I wanted to update everyone on our Smart Schools funding. As you know, we were approved for that, and all of these large screens over here are what we used for, with that money here at the high school and the middle school. These are all replacing the projectors and screens that are in the buildings between the middle and high school that were installed 10 years ago, probably. So there was a committee of teachers who had tested these out, reviewed them, and these are what will be in classrooms. You can see they're portable. There's a computer installed on that, so they're pretty, they're pretty nice. And our tech staff is working very hard to get them all out and about in the classroom, so I appreciate their work. And then finally, before I turn it over to our athletic director and many of our student athletes who came out on this warm evening, we did receive an email for us to consider electric buses. The individual who sent the email, I did speak with him back in the spring, and we currently are in a contract with school bus consultants to look at the school's start time, and I had spoken to them about including information about electric buses and conversions in that report, which they will include. That group will be coming back to the district September 16th, and they'll include that. We'll be meeting with transportation supervisors, as well as the committee for the school's start time, and we'll be looking at recommendations they have both for transportation and also the recommendations for the school's start time group to consider moving forward, so. Any questions on that? Okay, so at this time, I saw Mr. Keyes here. He's getting ready for the fall sports season, and he has, we wanted to recognize our spring athletes. Sometimes our spring athletes get overlooked because we go into summer and then it's next school year, but we were able to have some of them here tonight, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Keyes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's having a, having a nice, restful summer. This past school year athletically was a historical one for our school district. We, we were extremely successful, not only in, on the, on the playing fields, but also in the classroom, as, as you'll see. We had several teams and several really outstanding performances this spring that we wanted to just take note of. So firstly, every one of our spring sports teams were NISBA schools of distinction. We've talked about that before. Those are, those are varsity teams that have a team average of over 90. So every one of our spring sports programs achieved that distinction. And for the first time in our program's history, we were honored by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association for being a program school of excellence, where over 90% of our varsity teams achieved that distinction this year. So, an outstanding job by our student athletes. So the first team I want to recognize tonight, and I cannot speak enough about this team. I really, I have such a wonderful, blessed job where I get to experience the growth and development of student athletes, you know, every year, every season. And, and I had the privilege of spending a tremendous amount of time this spring with this group of young ladies and, and our coaches. Another state Final Four trip, just like our girls' soccer team had in the fall, our girls' lacrosse team had. First of all, I want to recognize our coach, Danny Blanchard, who did an absolutely outstanding job, overcame a tremendous amount. This team is the Section 2 Class A champions. They're the regional champions. They're state semifinalists, and there are very, very few teams, this is going to be my 17th year as a district athletic director, and I can count the number of teams on one hand over the years that I've seen that had this type of cohesiveness, where things didn't always go our way, but our kids decided that they were going to take the results of what we were handed and make the best of it, and then kind of prove everybody wrong. So with that being said, I want to bring these, these young ladies up and, and just recognize them for outstanding years. First, Lindsay Ayers.
Amy Burdick. Now, a lot, a lot of our girls, a lot of our athletes tonight are on vacation, they're at sports camps, they're at showcases, college visits, so. Elizabeth Chirilla. One of our captains, Jennifer Colabuffo. Avery Daggett. Sophie Glassman. Piper Gregory. Paige Holliday. May Healy. Julia Hewison. Lindsay Eisenberg. Yeah, she is. I saw you down there. Avery Jones. Bryn Jones. Catherine Kirby. Amanda Koch. Sophia Koch, captain. Mary McDonald. Ashlyn McGrath. Kirsten Murray. Lauren Riker. Emma Sinick. Ella Stewart. And Caroline Wise. Congratulations, girls. Great job. Next team I would like to honor tonight is our boys' varsity tennis team coached by Steve Smith. Every single year, this team finds a way to outdo the previous year somehow, some way, and it's getting tough because we've now had back-to-back undefeated years. I don't think our vars, our junior varsity has lost a game in years and years. So Section 2 champions, we also had several All-Stars, Coach of the Year, and I also want to mention that we had a state qualifying doubles team of Govindchari and Leighton Emery. So, and of course, scholar athlete team. So, great job. With that, I want to call, call the team up first, one of our captains, Mike Bevenue. His brother, William Bevenue. Matthew Broccoli. Hayden Brown. Owen Bryant. Jack Berman. Noah DeGraal Elias. Justice DiMarist. Leighton Emery. Zachary Hodgeon. Graham Hardeman, Hardeman, sorry. Andrew Evenowitz. Henry Copeland. Kevin Lynn. Andrew Luntz. Ashrith Rao. Ethan Royka. Captain Adam Wilson. Michael Shi. And Tao Shi. And come on up, Coach Smith.
I can't see anymore, do you? Getting old, I know. I have these like all over the house.
Next, I'd like to honor a state qualifier. I'm not sure if he's here tonight. He's had an incredibly successful high school career. I also want to mention our boys' and girls' track and field programs are coached by Darnell Douglas. Matt Cavallari. Matt, there he is. So, Matt is no stranger to these ceremonies. He's a state qualifier in the 1600 meter. He came in fourth place, we'll start there. Came in fourth place. Congratulations. Matt has been finished in the top three in sectionals ever since he was a sophomore, and he will be continuing his academic and his athletic career next year at Binghamton University. So we are going to miss him. A wonderful young man and outstanding athlete. His teammate, I'd like to bring up Matty Levassami. If Matty's here. Well, Matt was the Section 2 champion this spring in the pole vault, and he's only entering his sophomore year, so lots of great things for Matty ahead. So congratulations. Congratulations, Matt. And our final group, and I don't see any of them here, but coached by Dave Rounds, this is an, this is really an incredible accomplishment. So this year, boys' lacrosse team had a historically successful year. The, our best regular season, we were section finalists, really gave Niskiun all they can handle. And we had three U.S. Lacrosse All-Americans. Just to put that in perspective, there are only a total of five in the entire section. We had three of the five. And there were only a total of 50 in the state of New York, and New York is considered a powerhouse interscholastic lacrosse state. So just wanted to mention Declan Ferris. Declan graduated this past June. He'll be attending Binghamton University, defenseman, just an outstanding team leader, a great athlete, will be sorely missed by our program. So, congratulations, Declan. Ben Riley, two-time All-American. Ben will be attending Cornell University this coming fall. While Ivy Leagues do not give athletic scholarships, you need to be invited to be a part of their program. Ben had numerous Division I offers throughout the country, so congratulations, Ben. And finally, I know Coach Rounds is thrilled that Liam, brother of Declan, will be back for his senior year. Liam has given a verbal commitment to powerhouse Syracuse University, is an attackman, also the Times Union Player of the Year, and he's got a lot, a lot, a lot of big shoes to fill, so we're happy to have him back. So congratulations, Liam. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Okay. And before, before, Kate Len. Len, before you leave, thank you for a wonderful season. It was an amazing season for Bethlehem, so thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Board of Education report. I attended, and Jonathan was there as well, was it last week, a couple weeks ago, the NISBA Summer Law Conference? And among other things that I took away from it is that I'm looking forward to seeing what the district's plans are in terms of digital privacy and complying with the, some of the new digital privacy laws and regulations that we have in New York. I know that, that I think Ray is on our, our schedule in, in January to give us an update on that, but it sounds like there's a, a bunch of changes. And Jonathan, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add about the conference?
From, from the conference, I also ended up looking into the election law and finding out that the district can mail absentee ballots outside the district. So if we have somebody that is outside the district, they can get a, an application mailed to them outside the district. This is not something that we've done in the past, but it is something that we are allowed to do. And it's just one more way in which we can hopefully encourage more people to come out and vote.
Anybody else have anything else they wanted to speak about?
I can just give an update on the Facilities meeting that we just met.
That'd be great.
Tonight before the Board meeting. And we were going over some of the allowance changes, and we're going to meet again on September 18th to go over, we asked them to come back and let us know which are items that were changed from the initial or just weren't included so we can give a more decisive opinion or have a thoughtful discussion about the changes. So there'll be more to come in September, but Nick and Greg gave us a nice update with photos showing us all the work that they've done over the summer. They've been clearly very busy. The only thing I was disappointed was that the playground wasn't going to be ready for the students this coming fall, but it was minor in the, the scheme of things, and things are coming along very, very good.
If I have questions about the change orders, should we discuss that now, or should we discuss it later on when they come up in the agenda?
We can discuss it. Whenever you want, we can discuss it now or later, but I think they're going to be coming back with more information if you have questions specific to, to Greg. We didn't get into a lot of the detail because we wanted the report structured a little bit different so we could ask some different questions on why there were some changes.
If you have questions about the ones that are specifically on the agenda tonight, if you want to hold those, and we'll do them when we get to that part of the agenda. Next on the agenda is our presentation, and Judy Kehoe is going to talk to us about the
Good evening, everybody. This is the time of year when we give you the final figures on how we've done with our year-end, and we look to the setting of the final tax rates before we generate the bills that will go out and be in everybody's mailboxes around September 1st. Again, we've just come through our budget process where we tried to incorporate all of the district's goals and elements of our strategic plan, so we think the budget that was adopted meets those requirements. Tonight, I just wanted to help explain the differences. I think for people who don't do this all the time, it can be a little bit confusing. The budget included the tax levy, which was the 2.03% increase from last year. That is going to generate an additional $1.3 million for our budget. What we'll be looking at tonight is the actual setting of the tax rates, which is how we carve up the levy between the two communities within the school district, and those rates, when applied to the assessed values in those communities, is what will generate the tax dollars that, when combined, will bring us to the $1.3 million for our levy. The budget that we did adopt is in compliance with the tax cap. That tax cap amount, the maximum amount that we could have approved was 3.54% when applying the formula that the state allows. The compliance with that tax cap will enable residents who are eligible to get their STAR credit checks, so I'll have a slide to explain those parameters for everybody as well. So this is the seventh year in a row where we have been at or below the tax cap, and there's no particular magic to that. Really, the levy that we approved was based on the expenditures that had been authorized as part of the budget review. But obviously, we're pleased to be below that cap because there are a number of fairly onerous requirements that we would have to invoke if we did not approve a budget in accordance with the tax cap. The final rates that you will be asked to approve tonight are close to the rates that we had presented to the community at our May public hearing. We're about 0.3 cents higher per thousand with these rates that are approved here tonight. While the district is going to be collecting the 2.03% more in the tax levy, the actual rate impacts between Bethlehem and New Scotland are different than that. And the reason for that is essentially because of the changes within the equalization rates between the two communities. This past year, the Bethlehem rate remained unchanged at 95% of the fair market values of the properties. These values are set by the state, and they look at the sales data within the communities and determine whether the properties are, in fact, reflective of market value. New Scotland's changed from 96% and dropped down to 92%. So with these equalization rate changes, they can drive some fluctuations in the rates. So the final rates are actually relatively close to one another. For Bethlehem, you're looking at $21.27. New Scotland is 70 cents higher at $21.97. The percentage increase for Bethlehem, it is just under .9%. So if a home is assessed at $250,000, it will be about $47 more for the year on their tax bill. New Scotland, because of that significant fluctuation in their equalization rate, that's driving a higher percentage increase where they're at 5.27%. So that means it's going So that means it's going to be a $275 increase on their tax bills. I added a chart on the next slide just to give some context on that, because this is something that has fluctuated over the past few years. If you'll note, between 2014 and 2016, those lines intersect. In those years, because the equalization rates were the same between both communities, the tax rates were the same between the communities. In all the other years, where in some cases, New Scotland was higher or lower than Bethlehem's rate, those changes were all driven by these changes from the state equalization rate. So pluses and minuses this year unfortunately is a higher percentage for New Scotland. For the fund balances, we had presented this information at the May public hearing. Since May, we've been working to close out our books, so we have some, they're listed as the estimated amounts. These are pretty close to the finals, but they are unaudited numbers. The auditors will be coming in about another week or so, and then we'll present out in October what those final, final numbers are post-audit. The changes since you last saw it, of course, the encumbrance number is higher. That represents the amount of orders outstanding as of the end of the year, but for which we didn't actually receive the goods or services. We had estimated 150, and in fact, it's higher at 325. We did increase the retirement contribution reserve for ERS by $50,000. We were slightly ahead of our projected amount of the loss. It wasn't as bad as we had projected it was going to be. We also had recommended an increase in the TRS reserve by another 20 or $125,000 to bring that from 500 up to 625,000. All of those changes are necessary in order to keep the undesignated unrestricted portion of our fund balance below 4%, because that is the state threshold that we have to abide by. The $4,021,000 that's listed there is at 3.99%. So we are in compliance with that, and each of these reserves, the amounts that are set there fall within the parameters. If you look to the fund balance and reserve report, that is also slated for your consideration tonight, that lists out all of the different reserves and how we determine what is appropriate to be in there. So all of these amounts do comply with that as well. I mentioned earlier the New York State Property Tax Relief Credit. This program has caused a lot of confusion for residents, I think, over the past year or two, as the state has been tweaking this program. The Tax Relief Credit is in addition to either the STAR exemption or the STAR credit check that taxpayers get. Any new homeowners cannot get the exemption on their tax bill. They get it in the form of a check if they're eligible from the state of New York. The state is trying to apply a carrot approach to getting people to convert over to the STAR credit checks. If you do that, you will benefit from the increase in those amounts each year. If you keep it as an exemption on your property, where you file for that with the local assessor, those amounts will not increase. So it's a flat amount. Not that any of the amounts are incredibly high, but that's the way that they had structured the program. So because we are a tax cap compliant district, if the resident has received either the basic or the enhanced STAR, that they're eligible for that, if they, in fact, paid their property, or their school taxes rather, from the prior year, and if their adjusted gross income is less than $275,000, you will get some form of a check from the state. They have a formula for this, and what it is, is it's a percentage indexed to your adjusted gross income, and that percentage is applied to the amounts of the basic or the enhanced STAR. The amounts are slightly different between Bethlehem and New Scotland. They're listed on there. So for instance, for the basic, that B refers to Bethlehem at $632. New Scotland is 613, and similarly so for the enhanced STAR. So if you're eligible, based on your income, the state will apply the percentage to those STAR amounts, and you don't have to do anything further. You should see a check arriving in your mailbox theoretically prior to when your school tax bill is to be paid, but that's how the program works. Something new for this year, we know nobody likes to pay their school taxes, and we try not to make it as, we want to make it as good an experience as possible, a little less frustrating if we can. So we have added a dedicated phone line for anybody who has a question on their tax bills, if they need a receipt, any questions at all about your school tax bill, you can dial this number. We will have it posted on our website as well, and it's going to ring directly into the receiver of taxes, Michelle Curtis, who can help get you whatever information that you need. So we hope that makes it easier for people. We have similarly arranged alternate ways for people to pay their tax bills. It can be mailed into the PO box that's listed on the screen. If you want to get an actual receipt in your hand at the time that you're paying your tax bill, you can go to either the Delmar location of Pioneer Bank or the Glenmont location of Pioneer Bank. They have some extended hours that might make it easier for taxpayers. They have Saturday hours at the Glenmont office. So if you are one of the taxpayers who likes to wait until the very last week of the collection period, you might want to go to Pioneer just to make sure that there aren't any delays with postmarks. We have had some people who have been frustrated in years gone by because the bills either weren't postmarked appropriately, they made errors in filling out the check, and we had to apply a penalty to their bills, which nobody likes to pay. So those are options to hopefully make it easier to pay on time. This year, the ending dates all fall on a regular business day as opposed to a weekend day. So to pay without penalty, taxes need to be paid by September 30th. And similarly, the 2% penalty, if your payment is received by, or postmarked by October 31st, that will save you additional penalties when the uncollected bills are turned over to Albany County at the end of the collection period. So that, in a nutshell, is the overview of the tax rates. If you have any questions on any of the reports or the information, I'm happy to answer. Chris?
A random nerdy question. I know the TRS is new this year, the reserve?
The reserve, yes.
Is there a cap to how much money you can put in that?
There is. You are limited to no more than 2% of your payroll amount for any single year's contribution. That number for us is $644,000.
So we're close.
We are at 625. You are also limited to a cumulative maximum not to exceed 10% of the eligible salary amount. So obviously, we're nowhere near that. This is the very first year that we have done that.
No, just a very important rainy day fund if the economy ever turned.
Yeah, those rates will fluctuate. We've seen them fluctuate wildly over the last few decades, so it does help buffer us from those impacts.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Judy?
Okay, thank you. This means it's an official wrap on the budget season.
Next on the agenda is our recognition of visitors on agenda items, and first up, we're going to have our public hearing on our code of conduct. Tonight, we're holding the public hearing on our proposed revised code of conduct as required by education law. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments, either for or against, on the proposed policy. Can I ask you, please, state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks?
I did have a question as to the changes or the revisions. Was that something standard that the state provided to us to change, or was it something that the policy committee worked on?
Within the code of conduct? The policy committee worked on it.
Okay.
Did you have specific questions about it?
Do you have a copy of it that you can put up?
There were several changes, so if you, if there's something in particular that you're...
The definition section, I just thought that some of the language was a little bit ambiguous, and I was just wondering where it came from, if it was just something that we decided. It was the definition section. There was a lot of terminology in regards to, I can't see it. Keep going. Restorative practices.
Restorative practices?
Yeah, sorry, restorative practices. I'm blind from here, so I'm sorry.
So we had some, we had information from NISBA about recommending revising the code of conduct to include language about restorative practices, because it is a, in terms of discipline, and that's probably not even the right word anymore, for students, that is where schools are trying to go. I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about that?
So the intent of using restorative practices is basically to help get kids to understand what they did, who they hurt, and use that practice in lieu of suspensions in school or out of school. Some of our schools already have been doing it. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we talked about a conference some of us had gone to, and they were doing a book study from Doug Fisher and Dominique Smith. So the language really is in line with some of our RTI behavior work already. And one of the things that we're sending out to parents at the beginning of the year is, because it's in the code of conduct, is a little, I'm going to say a cheat sheet, but what restorative practices mean, what does it look like?
And that's where I was going with it. Because I, looking at that, I understood what it meant, because I know the changes that we've made as a district, instead of using suspension as a practice, we want to help the child understand what the action was and be more positive versus negative reinforcement. So I understood that. But reading it at the code of conduct and not having the background, I was wondering if the parents would understand that language.
Then they probably won't, and let's be honest, a lot of people don't read that entire document. So we created communications help, put together some information that I think will help parents understand. So if a principal speaks to them about their child and say, "We'd like to do this, it's in line with," and we're talking about restorative practices, they understand what it means. So that'll go to them in our back-to-school information.
Okay. Can we, is that going to be on the website too, the cheat sheet? Because we didn't get that with the revision, I was just...
Oh, I can get, if I could get a copy of that.
Yeah, I can share that with you.
And are we also going to do instruction with the staff members to kind of understand what that means? Because just using my own personal experiences with one of my children, I won't say who, in a tech class, there was a kid who was pulling stuff and grabbing stuff, and I won't say which child, didn't say anything to the teacher and then pulled back, and they received detention. And they didn't understand because they weren't the ones causing, you know, the harm.
Right. So we had, actually, we just met, because it does fit in with our RTI behavior work, so we met, and we have kind of a plan to, monthly faculty meetings, to give teachers some ideas or suggestions as to if a child does this, what can you do in your classroom to help with those things?
So there's guidance, okay.
So there'll be PD ongoing throughout the year.
That was my biggest question regarding the policy changes, the guidance.
Yeah.
Jody, is this a restorative practice in the traditional sense where you get both the student that was harmed and the student that did the harm together?
That's the goal.
Okay. And does it, does the pamphlet that you're putting together for the parents also include that restorative practices also help to reintegrate the child back into the school community?
Yes, yeah, that's a big part of it.
Okay.
Because a lot of times, you know, when kids do something and they get in trouble, one of their fears is...
What happens when they come back?
Yeah.
But that's why, when you were talking about it, and that part wasn't there, I just wanted to make sure that we make sure parents are aware that it's a full circle process.
Right. And it really has to be a voluntary process.
It does.
You can't force kids, or you can't force parents to do it. It has to be something that you're open to, so...
Absolutely.
Seeing no comments from, additional comments from the public, we'll close the public hearing on the revised code of conduct. And then at this point, we'll recognize any visitors on any agenda items. So at this point, I would invite any member of the public who wishes to comment on an agenda item to come forward. Next on the agenda, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 1 through 9.
So move second.
Are we removing the change order in allowances, because we had tabled that to the 18th? In lieu of information to discuss the items that we weren't able to discuss?
We, I don't remember tabling them. I thought we were going to go through with them. Is, is there something in particular? Because I wasn't, I didn't have concern sitting in the meeting, but if there's something specific...
I didn't think that we had enough time to go through the items that we had questions on, and so therefore, we were going to discuss them at the 9-18 meeting, and so I wouldn't think that we would be able to approve them if we didn't discuss them.
Jody, what kind of, what would that cause in the way of delay?
That'd be a Judy question.
Greg, do you want to speak to that? I mean, that was the, Greg, did you have a different impression of the meeting?
Yeah, I thought we were going to approve tonight. I think a lot of the change orders, or the allowance authorizations are small that we were asking for you guys to look at. We could delay it. I'm not sure if there were specific ones that we could talk about.
I guess I'm okay with, because they were, they were, they were small in amounts, but going forward, I want to make sure that we have opportunity to discuss the items.
Yes, we talked about the change of the facilities committee.
We did talk about them.
And that we're not going to be doing the presentation, we're just going to go directly to, going through the spreadsheet and talking specifically about the allowances and the change orders in detail, if that's what you...
I think, though, it's fair warning that if we don't get to everything, we're either going to have to go back into the meeting or extend it so that we're all comfortable. I, too, have some concerns, but given the small amount, I'm also concerned about delays. And while I don't think it's prudent to approve something we haven't discussed, the, what I saw was relatively small amounts, so I'm, I'm willing to look at it this time. But I think those items that we didn't get to discuss, I think they're going to come up at the September 18th meeting.
Okay.
Just to go over to make sure that we're comfortable. If we're not, then we'll have to address it then.
Okay.
And we did have opportunity to review the items on the list, so I want to make sure that we're clear that we, we did review them before we attended the meeting. We just didn't have opportunity to ask questions as to why we made some of the changes, and based on the small amounts, I'm sure we'll get, provide an answer that's acceptable, so this time we can move forward and just revise the process for the next time.
Okay.
Meredith, do you have a couple of questions?
I did have just a couple of questions, just so I understood some of the language. My first question was regarding the Elsmer parking lot, and it seems like that was already addressed. So from what I'm seeing here is that they ran into some sort of unmarked sewer. Is that what happened with the Elsmer parking?
Yes, just for clarification, the parking lot will be done for the start of school. We don't have a choice here.
With extra parking spots, with extra parking spots.
We are all over it, yes. So as we were putting in some of the storm detention structures, we hit a, an existing sanitary sewer line that wasn't supposed to be in its location, it was supposed to be in a different location, based upon the record drawings that we had. Okay, so we tried adjusting the... drawings that we had. Okay, so, we tried adjusting the, the storm detention structure, but it wasn't cost-effective. So, we ended up having to relocate and install a new sanitary storm line.
Okay, great. Because it, it looks, just driving by, it has not looked like anything's been happening. So, I just didn't know if things were happening behind the scenes, and we could see it?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's been a lot happening.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear.
But that is actually not...
But also rain, but also you said there were some rain delays.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, and that change order is not before the board at this point. It was on the spreadsheet, however, it's, it's...
I see. So, the thing, the only things we're approving are the ones that are...
Are the highlighted items, yes.
And then, my second question was on page 2. First, I see something called door hardware alternate, and then I also see something regarding blackout shades. And I was wondering if you could just tell me what the door hardware is. Is that regarding the safety locks that we discussed earlier in the spring?
The door hardware, we, I'm trying to think here. The, the door hardware that was proposed by the contractor was not, didn't meet the standards that we, as a district, have, that we want, from a point of long-term maintenance, from what they proposed. The spec wasn't written from a performance standpoint that gave us that ability to say, "That is not an approved equal." Okay, so, we, we end up creating and telling them the type of hardware that we wanted to, and that was the difference.
Okay, so that doesn't have to do with the, we did a pilot program with a certain kind of lock? That's not...
It doesn't have to do with it.
Yep.
Okay.
No, that's being done in-house.
And then, what is, what is the linen blackout shade? Is that also having to do with the doors?
Help me out?
It's on page 2, most of the way down. It says, "Per return submittal from architect, we are able to provide blackout Avila linen roller shade fabric in lieu of the 1% fabric."
It's the GC 016A 3-line?
Yeah, so I think this was for specific rooms. There's not a cost associated with that.
No, I was just wondering, is that also a safety feature? Are those the...
No, these are, these are actually the shades that go on the windows that we're replacing.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we're actually going from the old style of the metal Venetian two-inch blinds to more, the industry's going more to a shade, and we're finding out with a lot of the, the computers and the projections, that we want to go with a little darker blackout type shade. It's not for the doors.
Okay, and will that help us at all with blocking out the sun, perhaps keeping rooms cooler?
Yeah, yeah. Any, any of the windows that we're replacing is gonna be with a low E, energy-efficient type window. So, yes, we are also doing some window film on certain windows that are facing the sun quite a bit-
Great.
-to help with that solar gain.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions?
I was just thinking, Christine, maybe to your point, if you get the materials from Greg on board docs a week or so in advance, if you have specific questions, when you look through that, maybe send them to Greg in advance. And that way, we might be able to get, you know, we have limited time, and there's, sometimes there's a lot of stuff, but that might be a way to kind of facilitate the, get the answers.
And I think the labeling, the labeling-
The labeling will make a difference.
Tremendously.
Right.
The labeling, the color-
Yep.
Yeah.
All the things that we talked about today.
And I just wanted to go back to your, on the hardware, because it was a significant increase from the estimated?
It's a decrease.
Yeah, it actually, it was a decrease.
Oh, it went down.
So, they started out very high-
And then you went down, okay.
And the construction manager chewed them down and basically came up to that, I think it was about 42,000.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify, Jody, though, are we going to get this a week in advance?
It goes, it goes to the Facilities Committee-
If we have questions, should we email when we get, when we get our board updates? Should I email ahead of time if we have any questions?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, email you guys, or email...
I guess, you can just send it to the whole board, and then that way, the Facilities Committee reps are aware of the questions, too.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
I know we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, 1 through 17.
Point of order.
Yes.
I'd like to isolate two positions out of the, the middle school co-curricular, assistant direct, director for the musical, and the high school co-curricular, the choreographer for stage 700, to be voted on separately.
Okay.
We have to vote on isolating them?
On isolating them? No.
No.
So, if we can have a motion to approve professional personnel action items 1 through 17, with the exception of the two positions, the one being the, the middle school co-curricular list, which is under item 14 for the assistant director of the musical, and item 12, high school co-curricular appointments for the choreographer.
I actually wanted two positions for each isolated out, for the high school-
You want some additional positions isolated out?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, for the, I don't have them in front of me. So, the middle school, it would be the musical director and the director. I don't know what tiers they fall under. And then, at the high school, it would be choreographer, musical director.
Anybody else before I restate that again?
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, let's try that again. I can have a motion to approve professional personnel action items 1 through 17, with the exception of, within item 12 for high school co-curricular appointments, the musical director and choreographer of the musical, and item 14, middle school co-curricular appointments, the director and assistant director of the musical.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just to clarify, I'm just looking at the list right here for the middle school. It looks like there are three assistant director positions.
Yeah, we added one during the budget process.
I know, I just want to clarify-
Which one is being isolated out?
Which one is being isolated out?
There's the director down here. So, it would be the director of the middle school musical, and it would be assistant director MS musical, Lindsay Packer, dash here.
It's just listed as assistant director, and not the tech director, and not the set builder.
Right, so the, right, the other two are specific, one is tech and one is set.
Okay. So, with those exceptions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those pass. Turning back to those particular positions, if we need to have discussion about those particular positions, then we need to move to go into executive session to do so. So, I don't know if you want to, if you're, if you would like to have discussion, or if you would like to...
It's not a discussion in particular in regards to that. It's just that I still think that us as a board and as a district, we don't have policy that indicates the board should not appoint positions that could potentially create a conflict of interest. And it's different from the policy that we have. That's the only discussion I need to-
Okay.
-to have on it, which is not related.
Okay.
And I would agree with Christine on this, and it's the reason why I also wanted to isolate.
Okay.
Can I, before we move to executive session, can I?
Is there...
No, we're not.
I think, I don't think we need to, if that's the, where the discussion is going to.
The extent of the discussion.
End. If I can have a motion to approve the appointment of the director and the assistant director for the middle school musical, under item 14, middle school co-curricular appointments, and the appointment of the choreographer and the musical director for the high school musical, under item 12, high school co-curricular appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? That passes. Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, 1 through 14.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item D, other action items. Sorry, that passes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, 1 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item 8, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. At this point, I would invite anyone of the public who would like to come forward to address the board on a non-agenda item. If you could please state your name.
I think it says on, yes. My name is David Burdis. I'm a resident here in Delmar in the school district. I'd like to talk about the electric school bus issue briefly. I'm aware of the letter that you folks received from Joe Murphy. I'm also a member of the Bethlehem Tomorrow group. It's obvious that they, that electric buses are worthwhile in the long run, due to reduction, elimination of pollution, particulate matter, and the CO2. The issue, of course, is the cost of the electric buses. So, I, you've gotten a letter. I'd like to try to, maybe helpful, to put a little framework on it. So, electric buses are more expensive than diesel buses. We're talking about the school buses. That's yes and no. The upfront cost is clearly much higher. The lifetime costs are cheaper for the electric buses, due to the much lower operating cost from fuel and the maintenance. And the break-even point is roughly 10 to 12 years. It depends on various factors, but that would be the general idea. So, the problem is the upfront cost, the financial issue of the upfront cost. So, how do you deal with that? So, to me, there are a couple of different ways. One is, you get free money, you get grants. And I'm thinking of two possible sources. One, you would know better than I, which is the 2016 school bond issue. If there's any money left in there, if maybe that could be used for purchase of some infrastructure or a bus, that I don't know. The other one is the VW settlement money, for which there is some $50 million allocated to electrification of buses. That's transit buses, and they'll get the bulk of it, but it also includes school buses. That money has not been dispersed. They haven't, they still have gone through some bureaucratic stuff. So, there's still considerable amount of time to make an application for getting some of that VW settlement money to pay for a bus, several buses, and/or some of the infrastructure. So, that's a free bus, free money. That'd be great. So, that, to me, is a very promising avenue that I think you folks could explore. Another avenue is related to the utility. They, they like the idea of having battery storage capability, and so the buses are sitting out there all summer long, and they could be used, from the viewpoint of the utility, for battery storage and use them during peak hours and stuff. And in the letter, it refers to what went on in White Plains, where Con Ed did pay for the infrastructure and the special electrical system that was needed to allow them to access the battery electricity. And they even went further and helped pay for some of the buses. Now, what National Grid will do, I have no idea, but that's another avenue that I think would well be, well, be well worth exploring, since you do have the buses that are just sitting there. So, that's sort of what I think of as the, as the free money, the free, get a free electric bus, then you don't, then you know you have $100,000 that you didn't pay for a regular bus. The other one is to try to reduce the upfront costs. And in the transit business, the city transit buses, the bus makers offer financing or leasing. You can lease the battery, or you can even lease the bus. And then, you pay for that by the, by the savings that occur over the lifetime of the, of the operation. In the websites of the school bus manufacturers, it does talk about financing. Whether they will do the leasing or battery leasing, that I don't know. But that's something that, if they would, would definitely reduce the upfront cost, or maybe even lower. And then, you would pay for it, basically out of the savings, the operating savings, over the course of, of the years. And then, of course, there's also a bonding. You could probably do a bonding issue. And of course, there are other little pots of money floating around, that sometimes they have money, sometimes they don't. They change what they'll offer and what they want to offer. This is both at the federal level and state level. So, between all of that, it seems to me, VW settlement money and/or the leasing, and the possibility of using National Grid, it's, you could, it ought to work. You ought to be able to find a way that does not increase the cost to the school district for the, getting some electric buses. The, maybe a complex financial package, as they say. So, so that's what I wanted to say to you. Joe Murphy, who I know, who wrote the letter, and I are happy to help you in any way we can, at any time. And it's our hope that, along with Bethlehem Tomorrow group, that you can find a way, we would be super happy if you could find a way that would allow you to, in the next authorization for school bus purchases, be able to include electric buses. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, your comments. Future meetings and events. On Monday, August 19th, at 6 o'clock, we're having a policy committee meeting, and that's here at the high school. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, September 4th, at 7 o'clock, here at the high school, with an anticipated executive session at 6:00. Meeting after that is on September 18th, at 7:00, at Glenmont Elementary School, with an anticipated executive session at 6:00. On September 19th, at 5:30 PM, we are having our board retreat, and that's also here at the high school. And on October 2nd, we have a regular board meeting at 7:00, anticipated executive session at 6:00 PM, and that is at Slingerlands Elementary School.
I have a question. If we have a facilities meeting, we'll just meet at Glenmont?
Okay.
That was my question.
So, the 18th, we'll plan to meet at Glenmont?
Since that's where our board meeting is?
Seeing no further business, and no reason to adjourn to executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.